They don't play during the offseason. I'm sure they.
Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education, and thank you so much for joining us this evening. You may follow along on the screens. So, you may follow along our agenda on the screens displayed here in the front of the room. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening. The first being Agenda Item 6.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.1 through 11.3. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the back table of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a time over which will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Velarde?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up first tonight are district highlights and recognitions, which I'm sure is why you all are here. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Velarde.
Thank you, President Davidson. One of the things that we get to do as a board and leadership team, we get to do, is something that might not receive as much press and as many emails, but we are just so honored as a board when we can recognize and honor the hard work that our students, our teachers, and our staff do, we believe, on a day-to-day basis. We are very honored that you are here. In just a moment, I'm going to go to the podium. I will ask the board and leadership team to form a line in front here, so that as each person is recognized, they will come forward and be able to shake some hands. So if you'll just pause for a second, we will put ourselves in place. Our first recognition is for the Future City Competition and Great Success Story. Is Dr. Drew Tomlin here? Oh, he is here. Come on forward, Dr. Drew. Give Dr. Drew a hand.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, and distinguished members of the Board of Education for celebrating and honoring the stellar work accomplished by this group of Heritage Middle School students. Congratulations, Huskies. Through your hard work on this fictional future city, you've done amazing things for the present reality of our school and for Westerville City schools. I'm honored to work with you every day, as we say at Heritage, as we keep our eyes on the prize and seeds every day with kindness, excellence, safety, and Husky pride. Nicely done. All right. Well done, well done. They're always so sharp, always ready. So at this time, I'd like to ask the two key teachers at the helm of this year's project to come to the podium. That's Ms. Ann Bates and Ms. Shannon Ball.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. It's our honor to present to you tonight the 2019 Heritage Middle School Future City Team. This team of outstanding 7th and 8th graders started this project early in October and gave up many lunches, study halls, and Saturdays to create a city in the future, 100 years in the future, that is. The project included five different components, a 1,500-word essay, a project plan, a virtual city, a seven-minute presentation, and a scale model that they designed and built. This year's theme was resilience, and the team was charged with creating a city that could protect a power grid from a natural disaster. Their city, Maryhamah, meaning Greater Home in Icelandic, is located in Iceland, and they chose to focus on volcanoes as their natural disaster. Now, as board members who approve curriculums, you can rest assured that these students have successfully demonstrated math, science, geography, history, and language arts skills at the highest level. While they are extremely smart, the most impressive thing that I got to witness is how they tackled problems. They shared equally in their decision-making process. They worked together as a team, and this was demonstrated about a week before the competition, the state competition, when they decided their scale was wrong, and they scrapped all their buildings, and they started over. And as they were making these decisions, they would, this is what they would do. They'd say, "Here's the problem." They'd identify the problem. They'd write it down on the dry erase board. A couple of kids would get up and talk about what they think needed to happen, and then they voted. And they went on. It was awesome. So I learned early in my career to surround myself with good people. And not only have I been blessed to have had the opportunity to work with these students, but they all came with some pretty awesome parents. They supported us. They transported. They offered their help with the project. And we were lucky to also have our engineer mentor, Mr. Eric McPeak from Delaware County, to help us with the project, and an awesome science teacher, Mrs. Shannon Ball, to lead the team to the state championship and on to the national competition in Washington, D.C.
The trip to Washington was an amazing experience for students. Not only did they get to meet teams from all over the country, but several international teams from China and Canada as well. They were able to experience some serious competition, but they were never phased. In fact, their resiliency in the face of pressure was incredible. During the competition, different judges came around and asked the teams questions for two hours. They were judging for special awards. They don't get a break during that. They have to keep going for two hours straight. Our students won Best Use of Innovative Construction Materials for their use of volcanic ash and lava. One of my proudest moments as an educator was when another team they had befriended earlier in the week won the competition. They were not, there was only enthusiastic excitement and joy from our team for their fellow competitors and friends, which showed their best Husky pride. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the 2018-2019 Future City Team. Cadence Shinsko. I know I said it wrong.
Grace Dykes.
Michaela Dorsey.
Thank you.
Sammy Gerulo.
Thank you.
Soraya Hamed, who's not here tonight. Ryan King.
Thank you.
Molly Kincaid.
Thank you.
Katrina Kajonis, who's not here. Margaret Milo.
Thank you.
Nabiha Mahmoud, who's not here. Becca Pyle.
Thank you.
Shre Shamalan.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Seeker.
Thank you.
John Stowers.
Thank you.
Eli Tanzi.
Thank you.
James Weaver.
Thank you.
Myself, Ann Bates, and Eric McPeak.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
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 Thank you.
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 One of the things that we often do is kind of read the resolution. I'm not going to read the whole resolution. They asked me not to. But let me read. This is really good. This is going to be given to the principal. It'll be placed in a prominent location, and we know all that. But let me read to you. I want to highlight this. Listen to this one aspect. Whereas the team from Heritage Middle School, led by teachers Ann Bates and Shannon Ball, along with engineer Eric McPeak from the Delaware County Regional Sewer District, took first place in the state competition for the second year in a row, and was chosen to represent Ohio at the National Future City Competition in Washington, D.C. These students are back-to-back state champions. I wanted to highlight, we make a big deal out of state championships, as we should. We need to make a bigger deal out of back-to-back state championships. And the only, the final thing I will say, the final thing I'll say to the students, is there is such a thing as a three-peat. I'm just setting that out there.
Dynasty.
Well, dynasty, okay, dynasty. Awesome, awesome. Hang with us for a couple other recognitions. Very important. This is a recognition for the Patriots' PEN and Voice of Democracy winners. I'd like to have Chris Curry come up, from American Legion Young Bud Post 17, to present. And he'll describe what this is all about.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for the invite. Members of the board, thank you so much for tonight's event. I really appreciate it. The kids appreciate it. Patriots, VFW has two programs for, one for middle-aged school kids, the other's for high school. Patriots' PEN is an essay they write. I think it's up to 300 words. We give them a theme in August, excuse me, April. And we collect it in October, and we just have a competition. And they did pretty good. Last year, we had third in the state. So, and our Voice of Democracy winner last year was fourth in the state. So, we do pretty good with this stuff. And I'd like to introduce my glorious team here of Patriots' PEN winners. There's only three of them. I'm supposed to do this in order, so I don't screw this up. Sorry. All right. Ella Munson.
Thank you.
Sidney Chu.
Thank you.
Michaela Stachek.
Thank you.
Good job.
And all of my elders will do it again next year, so we look forward to their applications next year to go through it again. My second set of winners is Voice of Democracy. It's high school. Two of our three winners could not come tonight unless I'm missing them. Morgan, are you here? Dylan, are you here? Okay. So I only have one of my representatives in Voice of Democracy. It's kind of like an essay, but it's verbally. You have to record it. The rules are actually set up for tape players, so, you know, we have to change the rules a little bit. We need to update, too. We'll get around to it. We're all a bunch of retirees, so we're not that efficient. So, three- to five-minute speech, and you'll be amazed at how many of the speeches are really good, but they go like six minutes, so they're disqualified, or two and a half. So, these are the people who met the parameters, and they did really well. And my only winner here tonight is Sarah. Sarah Gany.
Thanks, Chris.
No problem. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Love you.
Thank you very much.
Really tremendous work. Thank you for being here tonight. And our final recognition is the Americanism in Government Test winners. I'd like to have Dr. William Golden, American Legion, Young Bud Post 17, to come forward and share.
Okay. I've noticed that high school students are much busier than some of the others, because we've had several that are not going to be here tonight. So I'll just go ahead and mention a little bit about the Americanism in Government Test. We kicked that off in November, and there was 50 questions, true, false, multiple-choice questions, and then there was a 300-word essay. And the competition was pretty stiff this year throughout the district and throughout the state, I think, because there were a lot of high scores. Our scores this year in all categories were much higher than what they were last year. So I thought we were sure going to get some district, maybe some state winners. Well, we did get three first place in the district, so I'll go ahead and mention the people now. The first one was Peter Cochran. He was the top-scoring senior boy in third place in Westerville South High School competition, and he's not here this evening. And then Molly Golly was the top-scoring senior girl in first place, Westerville South High School, and she's not here this evening either. The next one is Joey Clegg. He's the top-scoring junior boy in first place in Westerville Central High School and District 12 winner. So he's a...
Quick.
The next one is Jessica Baker. She was the top-scoring junior girl in third place at the Westerville Central High School, and she is not here tonight. And the next one is Ruben Semiu. He's from Westerville North High School. He's the top-scoring sophomore boy and District 12 winner, and he's not here tonight either. And then, we now have Muna Ali, Westerville North High School. She was the top-scoring sophomore girl and District 12 winner.
And next, we have Ted Lau, second place, Westerville North High School.
And Ethan Moore, first place, Westerville North High School.
And the next one is Danielle Pratt, and she wasn't able to be with us tonight. She was second place from Westerville North High School. And then, the next one is Cassandra Moore, M-O-H-R, third place, Westerville North High School, and she wasn't able to be here tonight either. And then, the last one is Rachel Slayball, who was second place, Westerville South High School, and she is here.
I'd just like to thank everybody. The school district has just been wonderful in supporting all these young students. And I have served before, and when I was at the Ohio State University, for seven years in a row on the admissions committee. And let me tell you, if they won something like this, if they won something like this, or were Eagle Scout or something like that, boy, let me tell you, they went right to the head of the line. So, that is how important it is. And I'm sorry that some of them weren't able to attend tonight, but they all deserve a hearty recognition.
Thank you very much.
And just one more time, we just want to reiterate, from the board, from the staff, from the leadership team, we are really honored that you could be here tonight. But beyond that, thank you to all of the winners. Thank you to Young Bud Post. We really appreciate your support and all that you all are doing. And Heritage, you've got something going on at that school. Let's repeat. That's all I'm saying. Repeat. All right, give them all a hand. Thank you all very much.
And I know that you all are, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but you are
also welcome to leave. There'll be some pictures out in the hallway. Thank you again.
We'll just wait for one of those breaks to connect, then we'll get it.
Yeah.
You ready?
Okay.
Okay, moving on in the agenda. 4.1, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Board of Education held Monday, February 25, 2019, and the work session held on March 4, 2019?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Kellogg?
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. Just a quick update this evening on staffing for next year. I know it's hard to believe it's March. I think we just started the fourth marking period, which is hard to imagine, too, right? So things are going rapidly fast, and we're already making plans for next year. And so, I just wanted to give the board and the community an update of where we are with some staffing. We're trying to be more timely than we've been in the past in terms of getting into the field and finding qualified candidates, outstanding candidates to come work with our staff and our students. So, we're pushing ourselves to work harder this year on that one. And I want to talk a little bit about where we are with new positions. These are not positions that are resignations or current positions, but these are new positions and where we're projecting to add. And so, the major areas, as you know, we've been working on a middle school redesign program. In fact, this evening, you're going to be looking at curriculum for that, electives for middle school, for expansion of elective offerings at middle school for next year. And so, that is one of the area where we want to use some of our additional revenue, some of our additional resources, excuse me, for hiring. So, middle school electives will be a big priority for us for hiring for next year. We continue to see enrollment increases, and one of the areas we want to make sure we're addressing is our elementary. So, with enrollment increases and class size at elementary, we anticipate some additional new staff being allocated to elementary. We also anticipate some support staff there, administrative staff, building-level staff at elementary level for next year, some additional staff there. We want to maintain compliance with all special education regulations, both in terms of teachers and support staff, and so we anticipate some hiring in that area. And in the operations side, as you know, we started the My Van program this year, and all of those vans, it's nice when they're in their first year of use. Then you get the second year of use, and it becomes important to have a mechanic on staff to help maintain all those vehicles. So, moving forward for next year, we anticipate some hiring there. Want to keep in mind that the move to the My Van program was really an effort to reduce cost increases that were coming from doing that as a contracted service. And we will continue to have cost avoidance from that program, even with additional staff. So, that's a good piece. And we're also adding some custodial services for next year, a little shift around, and a little bit of additional custodial support, keep our buildings safe, warm, and dry during the year. So, and all of the entire package of new positions that we're looking at, we, of course, continue to look at the five-year forecast, the projections in there, the allocations moving forward, and all of the hiring we'll be doing, all the new staff will fit within the current five-year forecast to keep us on the right trajectory financially. So, those are the areas. We anticipate some new staff on top of positions that will be filling that become open during the year. Just wanted to give you that as we move forward. And we will start posting, we are posting as we go. We have some positions posted now. We will start posting these new positions as we start moving forward, to keep ourselves moving fast. Happy to ask, take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments, and we have two people signed up to speak tonight. Just a friendly reminder, you will have five minutes, and it will be shown on the screen. Up first is Peg Duffy.
I believe the agenda item I am addressing is 11.01, the middle school curriculum. I realize when this comes to the board, it has to kind of come piecemeal. But I'm wondering when, and this is not just for the parents of kids, but for those of us in the community, when we will see on the website what the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders might have option to be taking. This is important to those of us who don't have kids in school, and I stress this to you, because to me, now is the time to let the public know what you are doing with this. Don't just roll it out when ballot issue time comes. Start informing us now. And the second concern with that, did we, it's a question, did we at any time hire outside assistant consultants or whatever to help us in planning what we're doing with the middle school curriculum? Who were those people, and what did it cost us? Thank you.
Up next, we have Kathleen Weaver.
Good evening. I am also here to talk about, I think it's Agenda Item 10.1, the middle school changes. If, I don't know if Dr. Tomlin is still here or not, but this will sound very familiar to him. I first learned about the possible changing to teaming in the middle schools at a recent PTA meeting at Heritage Middle School. And I'm an active parent, and I'm going to have questions. And when I went to find answers to those questions, that became exceedingly difficult. So, after some phone tag with Dr. Tomlin, and eventually did, we did speak on the phone, but I wanted to go ahead and address the board with the same questions. So I have four main questions. If teaming is the best thing for the district, then why are we not shouting that from the rooftops right now? Like our previous speaker just said, parents want to know these things, and non-parents want to know these things. And if communication can be better, we'd all appreciate that. The second, my understanding of teaming includes lumping of students into groups. So, my second question is, how can this further lumping of students into groups be conducive to individualized student needs? Or could this perhaps unintentionally move us towards a teaching-to-the-middle? So I'll just, we already expect our kids to fit within the cookie cutter of the middle school scheduling, and I'm just concerned that the further grouping of our students will allow even less flexibility in scheduling. My third question kind of wraps in with the number two there, but how will this affect our gifted kids? Not just with the scheduling issues, because they could be accelerated, especially in some areas, but not others. So then, how do you schedule that child? And, but also, gifted kids have their quirks, and will the new people that we're hiring be qualified to work with, and not just the gifted kids. Of course, I want all of our students to be successful, but...
did, we did speak on the phone, but I wanted to go ahead and address the board with the same question. So I have four main questions. If teaming is the best thing for the district, then why are we not shouting that from the rooftops right now? Like our previous speaker just said, parents want to know these things and non-parents want to know these things. And if communication can be better, we'd all appreciate that. The second, my understanding of teaming includes lumping of students into groups. So my second question is, how can this further lumping of students into groups be conducive to individualized student needs? Or could this perhaps unintentionally move us towards a teaching to the middle? So I'll just, we already expect our kids to fit within the cookie cutter of the middle school scheduling. And I'm just concerned that the further grouping of our students will allow even less flexibility in scheduling. My third question kind of wraps in with the number two there, but how will this affect our gifted kids? Not just with the scheduling issues, because they could be accelerated, especially in some areas, but not others. So then how do you schedule that child? And, but also gifted kids have their quirks. And will the new people that we're hiring be qualified to work with, and not just the gifted kids. Of course, I want all of our students to be successful, but I'm here to advocate for my kids. So there we are. That's my fifth grader. Side note to that, I am grateful that we are looking towards hiring more full-time employees. Bottom line, that's got to be a good thing in my, back of my parents' mind here. And the last question is, how can the first year of such a big change be successful when it needs to go from concept to reality in effectively three months? And I can appreciate that the middle school design team has been working on things and working on things. And I feel like I'm out of the loop. And I'm an active Westerville Parent Council member. I'm on my elementary PTA. I go to my middle school PTA. And I'm asking the questions and I don't know where to find the answers. So that's why I'm here. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm not sure what Scott and Jen Knapp will present. Hopefully some of your questions will be answered. And if not, Dr. Kellogg, someone will get back with him?
Absolutely. I just texted Scott. So you might want to just, when they're, for the email, just touch base with Mr. Reeves, he can probably fill some of that in and find out where the communication is. I know there's been a communication plan as part of the rollout. So if there's blank spots in it we need to know about, Scott can help you with that. Happy to do. Agree.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. 7.1, may I have a motion, a resolution to, I'm sorry, a resolution accepting amounts and rates for tax year 2019, collection year 2020, as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, so this is an annual resolution that the county auditor requires in order for us to receive tax, property tax revenue. So this is, the Budget Commission has determined the rates for the current tax year, which is 2019, to be collected in year, in 2020. And so the board will need to approve to accept those rates.
Any questions?
No.
No? Okay, whenever you go.
It's exciting stuff.
I do. That's good. That's good.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, we have the personnel consent agenda, which is 8.1 through 8.9. But we are going to take this in two parts. Dr. Hopkins, okay? So we're going to start, I'm going to ask for a motion, 8.1 through 8.8 to start out with.
So moved.
Second.
And then if you would go ahead and present, and then we'll take the second piece after. Okay. Thank you.
President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, I'd like to present for your consideration tonight's Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights included in tonight's agenda are as follows. There's a total of eight resignations from various classified, classified substitute administration, and classified pupil activity positions. We have four one-time payments for staff who supported a number of activities, including the orientation of colleagues, visual performing arts, therapy sessions, and medical training. We have the employment of 27 individuals in various classified, classified sub, and predominantly in our new summer school positions. It's that time of year to start filling those. And the employment of individuals in a number of supplemental contract and classified pupil activity programs.
Okay. Any questions or concerns with these?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. May I have a motion for 8.9 wage and benefit administrative guidelines? So moved.
Second.
Third.
I am going to ask Mr. Velarde and Dr. Nestor Baker if they have any comments on this since they were on the committee.
Dr. Nestor Baker, would you like to begin?
Sure, I will begin. It's been well over a year now since the committee began its work. And what we called ourselves together to do was to take a look at our administrator wage and benefit guidelines to get a better handle on where we stand as a district as regards our compensation and our workload issues related to administrators. It is vitally important that we be competitive as regards administrators, their hiring, their practices. It's also vitally important that we do that within the constructs of appropriate business processes and procedures. To that end, we met repeatedly with a group of administrators that the superintendent identified based on their interests and their position within the district, classified administrators, licensed administrators across the grade levels and across student populations. We collected a lot of data. We did a lot of discussing. We did a lot of drafting and refining and so forth. And what we are voting on tonight is an update to the guidelines that currently exist for our administrators within the district. And in the end, what we found were there were some tweaks that needed to be done. We had a handful of positions that we needed to adjust. We had a handful of issues that we needed to address to both bring our document into better alignment so that we didn't have odd bits and pieces floating around that needed to be consolidated, and also so that we make sure that our performance-based compensation, which is a component of administrator pay, continued to make good sense and was an appropriate means of participating in the compensation for our administrators. So what we're voting on tonight are those tweaks that were done. And I do need to say, I will be abstaining on this, not because I don't agree with it. Before we started this work and during the vast majority of this work, my daughter was not an administrator in the district, and so was not affected by what is in this guideline document. She now is. So I don't, I can't really vote on it, I don't believe ethically, because she is impacted specifically by some components within this document. But I did want to point out that she wasn't involved with this and actually had no intention of becoming involved with it at the time that the committee work started. Mr. Velarde?
Thank you, Dr. Nestor Baker. I really, not a lot to add, other than to say that it was our honor to represent the board, to work in this capacity. My notes simply say that it is about leadership development. It is about keeping long-range plans at the forefront so that they are not the too distant future, but they are long-range plans, and that we always had our idea, our eyes on the five-year forecast. And finally, as was just alluded to, it is a way of bringing our policy together, our administrative guidelines together, as we continue to tweak those and align those. And finally, we have outstanding administrations throughout the district. And it is the board's position that we want to support them in all ways possible. And this is one of those ways. Thank you, President Davidson.
Thank you both very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Abstain.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, we do not have any old business. So 10.1 brings us to the first reading of our new middle school courses of study. And Jen Knapp is going to join us. Thank you.
And thank you for speaking. We have exciting things to share. While last time the student fee schedule is exciting and some changes proposed, this is a lot more fun. I just have to put that out there. So we've been working, as you know, for the past year and a half, and I think we presented in January. And I want to repeat the middle school AIM statement because I just think that does, it's just really good, I think. And, you know, to have, you know, just under 50 people work on this and, you know, get feedback and have parents and student interviews. And it's, it's been a lot, it's been excellent work. The middle school design team's AIM statement articulates, "Every Westerville City middle school student is actively engaged in dynamic learning experiences and environments that develop learning and life skills for academic and personal success." So what we're really bringing to you today are some dynamic learning experiences. We hope, I mean, we've done a lot of research, as I mentioned last time. We looked at what other districts were doing across the country. We used data from surveying our parents, from having, you know, small group discussions. I surveyed a student. I also had the opportunity, and I don't think I shared this last time because I don't, I don't remember if it had happened yet. So forgive me if I'm repeating myself. But I said, oh, shoot, you know, we, we didn't have a chance to talk to more students about this. And Dr. Kellogg said, oh, come to student advisory, or superintendent's advisory at each of the high schools. So I had an opportunity to do that, prefacing it with the AIM statement, and then saying, okay, knowing what you know now about your high school experience, what would you have liked to have seen? So that was also another layer of feedback that, that was really valuable. So I'm just, this is one big agenda item. So if it's okay, I'll just start talking through each of them. And you can interrupt me, you know, at any point. And of course, discussion at the end. Okay. So again, hands-on, relevant engaging opportunities were a focus. That is what we had heard from all of the groups. One course, Choir Six, which is an evolvement from the current course of vocal music, that was a lot more like general music, music appreciation. And we had some discrepancy on kind of how that looked. And we wanted to return it to a more performance-based course, very similar to grade seven and eight. The teachers had left all of the music standards in the vocal music course. And so it, it still matches, I mean, with some minor tweaks, it still matches what seventh and eighth grade look like. So that's a slight change and it would still meet in the same way. World Cultures and Music, this is proposed to be a sixth-grade course. And in this, students will be discovering how music can play a role in helping us to understand ourselves and others, as well as how we interact in different communities throughout the world. Students will uncover some ways of thinking about music, community, musicians, musical instruments, and how this relates to their lives. This was a lot of feedback around, from the high school students, as well on building culture, understanding different cultures. And we felt that music was a good opportunity, kind of as a platform for us. The teachers met, and I've had meetings with them throughout the year. One of the things that they requested, which I think is a great idea, is once the teachers are selected to teach this course, that they have an opportunity to get together in the summer, as well as, you know, because it's aligned to the standard. So all, the music standards are there. They did remove, I'm going to say, three or four of the performance standards within grade six, because at this point, it's more of learning about it necessar, than necessarily playing or, and I mean, if you look at the music standards, it's extremely specific. It's like, you will perform this with a one-fourth eighth cap, you know, words I don't know. You know, it was super specific when it came to music, and they felt that that wasn't what this course was trying to do. So they did remove some of those standards. They also wanted to have opportunities to bring in guest speakers. And they wanted that as part of the financial request, as well as the possibility of going on field trips if, if it worked out for them. I'm going to catch my breath. So far, so good?
Great.
Okay. Medical Detectives, this is a Project Lead the Way course. So as we've heard, or as we heard from students, it was, we want more courses like engineering. We want hands-on. When this was shared on the February early release with the middle school teachers, I had them do kind of a grounding exercise where I said, tell me about one of your favorites' experiences as a middle school student, like from eight to five, or eight to three. This isn't about the dances, or, you know, let's talk about school. And they said woodworking, and building the birdhouse, and home ec, and hands-on, you know, that's, that's what our adults remember too. And so Medical Detectives and Computer Science for Innovators and Makers are also Project Lead the Way courses. They're gateway courses, just like automation and robotics and design and modeling. We put those two together and call them Engineering for Grade Seven. So teachers would go through specific training. As you noticed, this course of study looks, and the computer science one look a little different because it's exactly from Project Lead the Way's work. And so they will be detectives, and they're going to be exploring the biomedical sciences through hands-on projects and labs that require students to solve a variety of medical mysteries. And they'll be investigating activities related to forensics, medicine, crime scene investigation, dissection of preserved specimens, diagnosis of infectious diseases, and collecting experimental data. And this aligns with our health pathway. That was also very important in the feedback that we got, that we are helping students to explore these opportunities as middle schoolers as they work to make selections moving up in high school. The engineering course, well, let me jump down to computer science, actually, kind of keep that in line. So students will discover computer science concepts. So we do have computer science principles in Computer Science A, AP Computer Science A in our high schools. So this helps to build that foundation as well. They'll be creating personally relevant and tangible and shareable projects. So this is, you know, the first unit in this course is an intro to coding. And then it's kind of making something work. And then they're putting it all together in a variety of choices of a culminating activity. So it's much more that intro to coding.
Just a quick, quick question. Did you say what potential grade level that course was for?
I don't believe I did. So both Medical Detectives and Computer Science for Innovators and Makers would be seventh-grade courses, and they're designed to be quarter-long courses.
Okay.
As we've looked, it would be our hope that Medical Detectives is offered next year, and then Computer Science for Innovators and Makers is offered in 2021.
Okay, thanks. I just think it'd be helpful for people to know kind of what grade we're targeting, kind of the rollout process. Thank you.
Yes. No, thank you. That's a great clarifying question. Engineering Extreme, it was called Advanced Engineering, and the overwhelming feedback was, that's super boring. So Engineering Extreme is where we landed. We even, and I'll say, at Middle School Curriculum Council, people were, were allowed to put post-it notes. And I said, okay, you guys can think of a better name, because the overwhelming feedback is, so when we voted, we said, you know, name to be determined later. And they were appreciative. So growing from the course students experience in grade seven, our engineering course, students will be challenged to develop their own solutions to real-world problems while incorporating advanced technology and tools. So with the teachers, and we met with the engineering teachers at least twice, and what, while they loved the engineering course, they said, are kids really learn how to use all of the resources and all of the equipment, but now they get to use it more and how they want to? And I think that that was so important. So, you know, that skill is really developed. And we currently have all of our students taking the engineering course in grade seven. So this would be an elective eighth-grade course. And also, we help, we think that that will help feed our engineering pathway at the high school, because right now that's a void for us. And so students get really excited about taking this in seventh grade and then don't have an opportunity to do that currently. So, and I will say that all of the teachers have been absolutely amazing. The engineering teachers really said that this would be a great opportunity for them, you know, and as, so as you read about it, if you look at it and you're thinking, okay, this doesn't have a, like, whole lot of meat, meat, like other content does, but it's talking about the design process. And what does it mean to be, you know, an engineer, and habits of mind, and project management, collaboration? And so it's really about that. And, you know, there'll be some teacher autonomy and student autonomy. Do you want to do this project as a group? Do you want to do it as a pair? Do you want to do it individually? And really working through the design process in that way. So that's been another exciting opportunity. The last I have on my list is a health course. There's a lot. And we currently have a wellness course that was half health and half PE. It was an elective course. And a lot of our parents, a lot of our teachers said, we need health. We need a health course in middle school. We had a lot of debate on where that class should land. It's landed also in grade seven. And we've just pared down, so we've removed the PE component of the wellness course for health, got feedback from the health teachers. And it's social emotional health, healthier relationships, nutrition, substance abuse, and reproductive health are the major units for that course. Again, a quarter in grade seven. And we did have a health PE teacher on the middle school design committee, which was also very helpful.
That's one I'm looking at right now. And I was going to highlight, I appreciate you reading through, I'm sorry to interrupt you a couple of times here. I, I want people to hear- I, I want people to hear the content standards for just the social emotional health piece. Keep in mind that these are middle school students and we know the struggles that they have. They're going to be talking about and dealing with healthier ways of, of, of dealing with stress, learning communication skills, dealing with social media, nobody needs that, mental disorder coping skills and self-harm. This is needed in elementary school. It might be needed sooner than that, but just let me give that. And I, what did I say? Do they need it now in elementary school? They need it in middle school. They have it in middle school. Did I say something wrong?
You were talking about-
I misspoke, didn't I?
Yeah, and it's not a big deal. It's just a middle school course of study we're talking about, yes. But you're absolutely right.
I'm sorry. I was following you and I'm with you, yes. And we could probably use it in elementary school also, so-
I think that's what I meant.
Okay.
Anyway, I just wanted to highlight one piece of it because I am so thrilled with the work that you all have done.
Thank you. And, and I do think that making this a required course for all students is really important to, to our teachers. I mean, when we say health, the eyes get bigger and all the heads nod. And so that's, that's been good feedback. And we do have a K-five health curriculum and I could pull out the social emotional, and I, I think it was a misspoke, you know, you misspoke, but I could look that up too. That wouldn't be bad to, to reflect on that.
I've never misspoken.
And I was here and it's recorded, you know, for posterity perhaps, I don't know.
Okay, I'm done now.
You're welcome. Questions, comments? It's been, it's been super exciting. It's been a lot of work. It's been some of the best work we've done, I mean, that I've personally had an opportunity to be involved in, so thank you for that.
So as I look at these, I'm just thrilled that kids are not going to be sitting behind desks. The first thing I saw was movement and I really, really appreciate that because our middle school kids need to move, along with they get to learn some really neat things. And I like how it leads into the high schools, the pathways there, but it gives them a little bit of taste in middle school. This is, this is phenomenal. Thank you very much. It's good stuff.
And a great team.
I want to go back a little bit, and I'm not talking just about these courses. I just thought I would use it to go back a little bit. The report that we had in November and the work that has been going on in the district for the past year and a half related to middle school design is extraordinarily important and also extraordinarily exciting. As we look at what's going on with middle school design, the work is divided into three predominant chunks. One is organization and structure, one is curriculum instruction, and the other is social emotional learning. And the reason we have those three predominant chunks is because we are focused on really paying attention to the whole child at the middle school level. Sadly, years ago, in a severe economic downturn that the district was, was involved in, a number of things were sliced from the middle school program. And that left us with a program that while a lot of kids did really well and we knew it could be much stronger, much more focused on that whole child and much more effective for the development of all children across the spectrum. So as we've engaged in middle school redesign at this point in time, we are only now getting to the concrete point where things need to be put into place like these courses of study and the structures that, that will be put into play. Middle school redesign is a phase in and we will be beginning with sixth grade. And obviously, as these courses roll into play, that's part of the phasing in as we move to different grades as well as sixth grade. One of the speakers raised an issue about teaming. Teaming is one of the things that our middle school teachers, many of our middle school teachers were most upset to lose in past years. We've had teaming before. Teaming actually gives us a much greater opportunity to meet the needs of our kids and meet their diverse needs, as well as to meet the professional needs of our teachers in working together. I am really looking forward to the potential of bringing teaming back into the middle school and starting with sixth grade, moving that forward. If we're able to do that, it would be a huge step forward for the middle school program and for all of the kids within it. It is a way of structuring the day and structuring instructional delivery that provides much greater opportunity for individualization and much greater opportunity for teachers to take the instruction in ways that make better sense for the kids on their team. I'm looking forward to that. I'm particularly looking forward to the implementation of these courses as we look at expanding access and opportunity for our students at the middle school level. Courses like these open doors and engage kids in ways that we can't do right now. These courses help us do that, just as the structure helps us do that. And just as working with social emotional needs of our students will help us do that. So when we talk about what's been going on, our professionals have been working, 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 working to ensure that what we are designing is implementable, is doable, and does have a phase in across years as we look at dollars and needs. Now is indeed the time that we need to begin strong communication on this. There's been, you know, board presentation and so forth. PTAs have had conversations. The principals have been talking. The staff have all met to discuss this in addition to the about 50 people who've been engaged in the work thus far. In the early days of this lengthy effort, there were parent groups at each school who came in and discussed with us their needs and desires. And overwhelmingly, the focus was on opportunities for kids and working with the whole child. That is something we all agree on and something that this process is taking us much further along the path toward getting that done. So I know it's much more than about the, the courses of study that I was talking about, but I wanted to make sure that people understand that there is a great deal of work going on, that it is highly thought out, and that now is indeed the time when there will be significant communication points coming into play.
I'm going to jump in and add on to one thing and then I'm going to ask Mr. Reeves to come up and answer some questions if that's okay. But probably one of the reasons why parents haven't heard about it is because we're just learning about it. And until we vote on things, we, they typically don't like to present them to the public unless we are going to support them. So that's just one reason why. Mr. Reeves, will you talk a little bit about the beginning journey and where this started in the partnership?
Thank you. Yes, so we started this journey, as Dr. Nestor Baker said, we knew that our middle school programming was one that we wanted to build. And, and so we began and Ms. Duffy, one of the things that you had asked earlier was about, did we partner with anyone? And yes, we brought in Batel for Kids to come and help guide our work with this. And they helped us last year. They've been incredible because we don't always have the time to devote to this work that they do. So we engaged Batel for Kids both last year and this year to help us design this work. And a lot of it last year, as Dr. Nestor Baker said, was inquiry. We, we talked to nearly every staff member at the middle school. We talked to groups of parents at every middle school. We talked to the kids at every grade level at every middle school. And so that's kind of the natural delineation into the work that was done this year. And there's a lot of dominos that kind of needed to fall before we can just shout the trumpet. And someone said, we should be shouting to the hills. And we are really close and you can tell how excited we are to shout the work that we're going to, and the opportunities that we're going to provide our middle school kids very shortly. But some of those dominos need to fall, like courses need to be officially approved before we go out to the public and say, hey, we're going to have this, this, this. And the board will say, what do you mean? We haven't approved anything yet. A lot of the structure of what we're going to do in our day regarding teaming or our schedule is dependent upon some of this approval. And so as I was sharing a little earlier with Dr. Kellogg and as Dr. Nestor Baker alluded to, so I am scheduled to sit down with parent council. They meet here once a month. I'm scheduled to sit down with parent council in April. And we're going to have an absolute communication tool that we are going to provide parents and the parent council. I am also meeting with the elementary principals in April so that they can give the correct information to their fifth grade parents. And we're preparing for the moving up nights that are coming up so that all of our middle schools can provide the parents. We are looking to have a web presence so parents can very easily go onto our website and find out all the information and even the research behind all the things that we've been doing. So we're really close to just broadly communicating this out. But a couple of the dominos officially had to fall before, it'd be like putting the cart before the horse a little bit.
That's great. Thank you.
It's Scott's birthday, by the way. Happy birthday, Scott Reeves.
Thank you. Thirty-five, again and again and then again. Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Kellogg, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think Jen and Scott did a nice job. And in terms of the role of the consultant and it's process-defined, right? Not course-specific, I think. Ms. Duffy had asked about that. So specific to these courses, this is internal. This is us and what we want to do. That's not from the consultants. And they've done a nice job of reaching out to people. We appreciate the board's support of this. Again, as you're looking at it, you know, bottom line is, we're implementing new coursework, implementing teaming at sixth grade to address some transition issues with sixth grade and then provide a better avenue for delivering the curriculum. We're adding FTE to support all that. And all those changes in middle school are being done within the confines of the current five-year forecast. So we're trying to take the resources we have, stretch them as, as best we can to meet those needs. And so there's really, I know there's, some would like us to be going faster in some of this, but we have to pace it out against the resources we have available. So there'll be some phase in a piece of this. It also gives us time to the question of the teaming model and what's the impact is. We know we have a problem in the sixth grade transition. We see it in all kinds of data. It's very similar to the eighth grade to ninth grade transition, right? And so a lot of this effort is to improve the performance of sixth grade and seeing, one, as we work with our teachers, which will start this summer and the next year, ongoing with our principals on the teaming and how we want that to work, put the structures in place and how to effectively use that time. So as we grow in our practice and implementation of teaming, we'll be able to collect data, see its impact on students before we start thinking about whether or not we want to implement further in other grades. We don't want to implement something, see results that don't change, that costs taxpayers' money, additional money beyond where we're at. So we're taking baby steps along the way. Team's done a fantastic job. I want to take some of these courses, particularly anything with a large X in it called Extreme. Engineering Extreme sounds, sounds like bungee cord jumping off the roof of Heritage or something. It's going to be fun. So excited for the new courses. Appreciate the support of, of the board in doing this. And again, as Scott said, communication plan, here we come. So we're rolling.
Thank you both very much. Okay, 11.1, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion? No, moved.
Second.
Looks like some people are staying in Ohio and some people are going south. Any questions? Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, impractical to transport. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And with that, Randy Snyder is going to come speak with us. Welcome.
President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, good evening. I'm before you this evening under recommended action for standing business declaring impracticality to transport identified students. Ohio law allows public school districts to determine impracticality of transportation after considering a number of factors such as the cost of providing transportation and the number of students transported. On January 22nd in 2018, the board passed a resolution declaring two students impractical for transportation. And tonight before you is a list of two additional students that have been deemed impractical to transport. After our office has reviewed each of the listed students per the requirements in Ohio Revised Code, we have determined to declare the listed students impractical to transport. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.3, may I have a motion to approve the resolution approving HVAC improvements at Robert Frost Elementary School?
Moved.
Second.
And Mr. Dorn?
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Marshall. Before you is a resolution to approve an HVAC project for Robert Frost Elementary School. This project is part of our fiscal year 20 capital improvements plan that is scheduled for the summer. The scope of work includes the replacement of three air handlers that are original to the building, one return air fan, one rooftop unit, and adding five air terminal units or VAV boxes, and the replacement of the HVAC control system. This, the identified scope of work was per the request of our in-house maintenance team. Robert Frost Elementary School is one of our most expensive buildings using a utility cost per square foot analysis. In the last quarter, it was our second highest ratio of kilowatt-hours per square foot. This building is more than 26% higher than our average cost per square foot district-wide. Many of these components are original to the building that is 45 years old. The system as a whole has difficulty with airflow to the outer walls and therefore needs to be run longer to condition the building for the school day. Per engineering standards, the typical life expectancy for this type of equipment ranges from 15 to 30 years. Thus, the equipment has exceeded its useful life. And over the last two years, this building was one of the only two buildings that had a negative cost avoidance value. You hear me talk about cost avoidance a lot. So this is a building that doesn't have any cost avoidance. Bids were solicited in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. On February 18th, we received one bid that was publicly read on March 5th. The bid was submitted by Regal Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $534,587. And this includes alternate 1.1 to replace the one rooftop unit. Regal's bid is $149,613 or 21.9% under the engineer's estimate. Per the post-bid interview that was completed with Regal on March 6th and Regal's prior work history with Westerville Schools, we along with Triad Architects recommend that the board accept Regal's bid for the HVAC improvements at Robert Frost Elementary School.
Any questions, comments?
We do get our money's worth, don't we?
Scott putting the squeeze on him. Boom, microphone's open.
Thanks, Scott. Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And we have public comments. We have one person signed up to speak. Kathleen Weaver's going to join us again. No?
Sorry. My husband fixed it so I wasn't in the right slot.
No worries, no worries. Okay. Okay, we do not have any comments. 13.1, board comments?
Happy birthday, Scott. That was one of the first things I was going to say down here.
Yeah.
And Mark, it's Hershizer too.
I'm getting to that. And Hershizer, who is significantly older than-
Oh!
Happy birthday.
He's 36.
I, I could be both of their older brother. So it's, anyway, happy birthday, guys. That's awesome. And the only other thing I had is just on, in my liaison position, I hope it's okay, on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome Dr. Dixon, the new superintendent of the Columbus City Schools. We know that hundreds of people watch this broadcast, so I'm assuming she will get our welcome and perhaps we'll do something more formal to welcome her. We have friendly rivalries with all of the local central Ohio districts, but we also know that as each district rises to its best, that that makes an impact on our community and our region. So we welcome Dr. Dixon with open arms and we just hope and pray the, the best for her and the Columbus City Schools. Thank you.